Okay, good evening, everyone. At what time is it? 7:03. I will open tonight's meeting of the Lunenburg Select Board and ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. Okay, formalities first. In accordance with the requirements of the opening meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, on Facebook Live, on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube page within 24 hours after the conclusion of the meeting. If you have a computer, a smartphone, or a tablet, and you would like to participate in tonight's meeting, you can do so via the Zoom app or Zoom application. This evening's webinar ID is 909-174-0347. If you don't have any of those devices but have access to a phone and would like to participate via phone, you can do so by dialing toll-free 888-475-4499. And once again, the webinar ID is 909-174-0347. The posted agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. Okay, formalities out of the way. I will ask if there's any public comment from the board this evening.
I have none.
None. Any public comment from the public? None. Any announcements?
So town meeting is May 7th at the Middle School High School at 9:00 a.m. And we will be utilizing the electronic voting clickers, and those will be distributed through the town clerk and her election workers. And also, I just want to announce some road closures as well. Lancaster Ave. will be closed between Goodrich Street and Lemmonster Shirley Road on Wednesday, April 27th, between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. And this is due to crane needing to come into our residence to bring a tight tank in, so the road needs to be closed for that during that time. And Townsend Harbor Road will be paved on Wednesday, the 27th and the 28th, so expect delays on that road as well, because it'll be down to one lane.
Lancaster Ave. is closed tomorrow, not one lane, it's just closed.
Closed during those hours.
Right, but Townsend Harbor Road is just going to be down to one lane while they do the repaving.
Right.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Any other announcements? So since you're talking about dates, so the town meeting is May 7th, and of course, the annual town election is May 21st. So just be aware that polling place will be at the TC Passios Building as always that Saturday. Any appointments?
No appointments.
Okay. Next, ratification of the town manager's appointment of seasonal lifeguards, Ian Lowndry and Mason Bowser.
So these are two lifeguards that worked last year at the town beach, so I'm asking for their appointment for this year's upcoming beach season as well.
I would entertain a motion regarding the ratification of the town manager's appointments of the seasonal lifeguards, as listed, Ian Lowndry and Mason Bowser.
I move to approve. Second.
Any further discussion? Walls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. While we're talking about appointments and reappointments, so if you are interested, is it part of your town manager report to do the vacancies?
I do not have one tonight, town manager.
Oh, okay, well then it's probably not part of your report then. So let me just say that there are annual appointments for... This is the list I was given from the architect... So these are... I'm just going to announce the body, the municipal body that has openings, and some of them, the incumbents may be running for reelection or reappointment, I should say. So on the Architectural Preservation District, there's one historical commission representative, term to expire June 30th, 2024. The Agricultural Commission, there are three members, term to expire on June 30th, 2025, and one associate member whose term will expire June 30th, 2024. On the Conservation Commission, there are three members whose term will expire June 30th, 2025. Council on Aging has five members, terms to expire June 30th, 2025. Cultural Council, one member, term to expire June 30th, 2025. Green Communities Committee, two members for a three-year term to expire on 2025, and two associates, terms to expire June 30th, 2024. Historical Commission has two members, their term will expire on June 30th, 2025. Personnel Committee, two members, term to expire June 30th, 2025. Two members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, terms to expire June 30th, 2027. And two associate members of the ZBA, Zoning Board of Appeals, term to expire June 30th, 2025. So if you are interested in any of those positions, again, some of the incumbents are looking to be reappointed, so be aware of that. But if you're interested, please fill out a Talent Bank form and return it, and you can download it and email it, you can download it, print on it, and bring it back to the selectman's office, however you see fit to get it to us to be considered. On the issue of appointments on the Council on Aging, I was approached by the Council on Aging Chair who has made the following request. Several years ago, they had many members that had either resigned, not won reappointment and everything, and as you all are aware, we try to have an equal, as equal number as possible, members up for reappointment each year to make it more even. Well, they've gotten a position because of that event, and when we appointed everybody together, we didn't stipulate between terms. So this year, they have five members, and what they are looking for is go back to their 3-4-4. So they wanted to know if it was okay with this board, who was their appointing body, if of the five members, four of them will expire on 2025, and then one of them will expire 2024, to be a two-year term that will put everything back on a 3-4-4 schedule. So I said I would pose that to the board if anybody has any objections.
No objection, no objection.
All right, so let's make sure that we let the Council on Aging know that that is fine, though one of the members who's up for reappointment will take a two-year term just to get that back on schedule.
I would say that member should resign from that to be appointed to that other term one, to make it clean.
Yeah, yeah, they're going to... They'll pose a slate to us for that. You know what, I'll talk with her. I'll talk with her, you don't have to do it. And I'll just let her know that when they give us the slate, let us know who's up for what. Is that...
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't know if I was making more of a problem than solving, so. Okay. Discussion of the draft commemorative policy. So does everybody... Did everybody get a chance to review it? I didn't get any emails from anybody having any additions, comments, or anything. I personally was fine with it. We do have one thing to fill in on the expected life cycle, the second bullet point, we have a public safety or blank years, so we have to... We should probably fill in that, the number of years. So if it's a tree or other plantings that were commemorative in nature will be considered at the end of their life cycle. If the tree or planting has outgrown the original location due to size and interfering with public safety, or X years old, whichever come... Whichever occurs first. Now, Mr. Franco, you had brought up at a previous meeting that, yeah, if we have on a clock and it's ending, we're not going out and cutting the tree down.
Yeah, right, right.
It's just a factor in determining it.
No, no, yeah, I didn't expect that that would be the case.
No, no, I just wanted to clarify.
Yes, yes, that was where my bug was, what... Just picking what that number of years was going to be.
Right. So does anybody have any proposition of what they would like that number of years to be?
Well, it's a tree, so 50. Ooh.
That would be long. That would be longer than I thought.
I'm thinking half of that, 25.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I was thinking exactly the same thing. I was thinking 25.
I was thinking less than that, so 25 works.
I can live with that.
Yep. 25?
Yeah.
Okay, we're putting in 25. As long as we don't plant a sequoia, I guess, we're okay.
Or an oak or sugar maple.
Yeah. And again, it's... That's like, that's just a factor.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, it can be cut down in five years if it interferes.
Right, well, something... Yeah, or if it gets hit by lightning and splits in half or whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, so then, if there is no other objections to this or no other modifications, then we should vote on this tonight. Or I see no reason why we shouldn't vote on this tonight, let's put it that way.
I have a question, though.
Yes.
So one of the things that I know that we had talked about, that there was discussion about privacy, was something to do with naming things after people. Do we want to use this as an opportunity to, I guess, more to address that fully, or is that a... Would you recommend that be a future discussion?
Good question. I mean, I guess I could... I could see how it would fall under this. I could see how we could adopt this and just amend it later on.
Yeah.
Because we have this. Well, it could be another policy. I mean, anybody have any feelings one way or another?
I appreciate Mr. Jeffrey's point, but I don't know how we resolve that quickly tonight unless you wanted to talk to it for a minute or two.
No, no, I was just... I don't have a solution tonight. I mean, I think that the policy as it is, I'm okay with implementing so that way it could be an amendment at a future point or a second policy, but I do think we need to probably address, you know, how we name things after people, and if we should be doing that, and if we want to put time limits on that stuff.
Kind of... In some regards, the cat is out of the bag, but I'm with you. I think I voted against naming everything, anything after a person ever since I've been on here, so.
Yeah. Okay.
But we can... So we can address that, you know... Madam Pam, as it... First of all, do you know of another municipality that has that? And is it... Would it be under here?
I would have to look and get more.
All right, so you...
Yeah, I can't think of...
Okay.
Yeah, an example of it that's come across my desk.
Probably name... It would probably be a separate policy, probably be easier, but I'm fine with it wherever it goes.
The school has a policy on that, I don't think.
Well, now they do, I think, yes. Yeah, we could look at the school's policy. That's a good point.
Okay.
I tend to agree. I think it should be a separate policy. I mean, I think that this one is very, you know, narrow, and it's, you know, things that are items that have been, you know, commemorative items, benches, trees, things like that, and I think the naming policy would be best addressed as a standalone.
Okay.
All right.
Who is the... Who is our... I should know this, but who is our school committee representative liaison?
Oh, I...
Can you contact the school committee and just ask them if they can provide that policy?
Yep. At least for the next four weeks, I am. I mean, I'm up for, you know, someone else taking that over if they'd like.
I understand in the lawyer's world, four weeks goes down like that. You can easily, you know, file extensions and just eat up that time.
I think you're in the permanent huck loop.
All right, so let's take a vote on... Or I entertain a motion on the commemorative policy as distributed and written, and with the addition of that, those 25 years.
I move to... I move to approve the commemorative policy as presented and discussed.
Have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Walls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. So this was back on today, but this was the foreclosed policy, the properties, but as we had determined from last time we met two weeks ago, we obviously have a while to discuss this unless people are ready to vote on it here. So I will leave it up to the board. If questions that they had were answered, if there have not been, or there are other things that are hinging on this, then we will bypass it until further notice.
I prefer to bypass.
Okay. All right. Let's put this back on... Just so we know, so what are you looking for so we know when to bring this back up?
Yeah, I mean, I think that it would be... First, I did look into these properties, and I do understand why the conservation... It seems pretty clear to me why the Conservation Commission is requesting for these properties to be reassigned to them. I think that since, you know, this has to go before a town meeting to get approved, and the next one is going to likely be in November, I think that we have some time to just discuss between now and then, kind of just to do a review of all of our properties, and, you know, there may be more that may fit into this category, but I'd rather there be a systemic kind of process that we engage in, in which just as the Conservation Commission is looking at, you know, longevity of the town, that we also take an approach to look at some of our parcels to see if any can be designated for future use for the municipal purposes, or if they would be better served in some form of a chapter but held by residential owners rather than by the town, so that way we can continue to collect revenue. So I mean, I'm not opposed to any of these properties going there, I just think that I would like to do it as part of a larger process, and I think that we have enough time over the summer to get there.
No, I'm just asking because I want to know when to put it on. I don't want to put it on just to keep going over, so didn't the... So, hold on one second. Did the Open Space Committee review all of town properties that we had? I'm just looking to start as an inventory. Don't we have an inventory?
Mm-hmm, as far as the Open Space Plan.
Okay, but do we have a... Do we have an inventory of all's town-owned properties?
Yes.
Okay, so if we can get that list to us so that... Because that's what you want to review, you're saying, right?
We have the list. I think that there's another part of that which is also like the map, but I know that that's still in process and it's going to take a little bit more time.
Okay, how many properties? I don't recall the list.
Well, we have a lot. We have a lot of property.
A lot? Like 100?
I would say with between conservation, parks, town, school, yeah.
Okay. All right. So let's postpone this till, you know, end of, let's say, beginning of the next fiscal year in July, we'll revisit it.
Yeah, I just want to add, if I could, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sure, no. One of the things I wanted to add is that when we review these properties, one of the things I would like to see provided this select board are things like, you know, for example, if it's a piece of property with wetlands on it, or any restrictions that are currently under mass general law, because I don't imagine that these properties have wetlands on them. I don't imagine there's going to be a radical reimagining of the Wetlands Protection Act to decrease the amount of protection these lands have. I can only see it increasing. So if you're on a property, like many of these are, that are essentially swamped, they're already protected. They can't be developed anyway without a special, you know, waiver from the Conservation Commission or something like that. So, you know, I'd be... I don't know the point of turning it over to the Conservation Commission if it's already protected. So having that information at our fingertips when we look at it and say, oh, you know, it's within a, you know, 100 feet of a, you know, the buffer zone of a wetland, the whole property, what's the point? It's already protected. Why... That information is valuable versus if it's upland and developable, you know, that is also valuable information for us to have.
Well, I think that one of the things, and I don't want to speak on behalf of the Conservation Commission, but the Chair, you know, when it came on the Zoom when we were discussing this at our last meeting, and one of the things he says, because if it's under there, they have established policies of the use. So yeah, I understand your point about developability and everything, but if the town owns it, then there's no, you know, there's no regulations, there's nothing regulating what people can and can't do.
Right, but the Wetlands Protection Act does regulate activities within the buffer zone and what people can do within that area, and if they want to do something that, within that, they have to go before the commission anyway, if it becomes privately owned.
Okay.
And, well, frankly, the town, if we want to do something in there, we have to go before the Conservation Commission as well. So if it's already in a jurisdictional area, then I think, you know, if it's already protected, why do we need to, you know, have the Conservation Commission or any other board or commission, Control Agricultural Commission or something like that?
I don't have a ready answer. I'm...
Right.
You were on the Conservation Commission.
Right, but it's that sort of information that's helpful to us.
Well, I agree that the information is absolutely helpful, so I'll split my answer into two. To your point that I wish we had had that, yeah, I think anything we do, anything that comes before us, the more information that we can get, the easier it is to make a decision. So I agree.
I mean, essentially, we were giving the assessor's map with just a plot plan without any, you know, we had to look it up on Google Maps during the meeting, figure out where it was, what water bodies were there, and that.
Well, the map showed it was wetlands, if I remember correctly. It had the symbol for the wetlands.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you're right. I mean, sometimes it's not obvious, and sometimes they just give us a drawn map with no symbols on it. I agree. And it's not like we live in the biggest town in the world. I mean, there are, you know, finite number of parcels in the town, and it's not in the, you know, hundreds of thousands. It's like, you know, in the 10, 10 or 20,000, so. It has to have some interactive, you know, easy interactive that's always available at this meeting in this room somehow, but that's a wish list that we can come through another time. Okay, so we'll put that on, and yes, Mr. Franco, you had a...
Yeah, either these were modified to include the acreages, or I just didn't notice them last time, but that's information I'm always going to want to, even if it's just land... Even if it's landlocked, has no other purpose, and it's a swamp, just for purposes of completeness, I'll always want the acreage.
And we should also want the valuation, because, I mean, Mr. Jeffrey's asked last time, how much do they bring in, and it would be good to know. What do they bring in? What do they value it at? So.
Yeah, because we can sell some swamp land to someone and make some money off of it.
This is Glenn Gary, Glenn Ross. All right.
There's Pete in the bottom of it, can we word something?
Okay. Discussion of fiscal year 2023 budget, capital plan, financial forecast, annual town meeting warrant articles, including updates or votes of recommendations, and the consent calendar. So let's take them one at a time. Anybody have any questions? Any updates on the budget?
No.
Any questions about the budget?
No.
Capital plan, I just want to give a heads up that it's been a big discussion at the Finance Committee. It's, I don't want to say solely, but especially promoted by the Finance Committee Chair, but I'm assuming, I mean, is there, as, I don't know if you can speak to this, Mr. Passios, but was it taken as a vote of the board, or it's just been an open discussion about the capital plan and what amendments can and cannot be made at the town meeting?
Dave Passios, 56 Whiting Street, and also a member of the Finance Committee. I think I can dare say that the committee is not in full agreement with the questions that have been brought up, and at this point have voted to defer to town meeting on any decision. That may change Thursday evening.
So that is a big agenda item for them, and they had requested from Town Council an opinion on what is or isn't in order as far as amendments to the capital plan, and the Town Council, in a nutshell, I won't read the whole opinion, you can get that from the town manager, but basically it is that you could... The town meeting can certainly adjust the dollar amount of the budget, because that's in their legislative capacity, but he... It was in his opinion that they couldn't reach down and say, we don't want this item or that item, like they couldn't pick out items to the money would be spent on. They could reduce the amount to anything they saw fit, but they couldn't dictate what would be purchased with that. And that is, I guess, a point of contention that the Finance Committee has. The Chair of the Finance Committee will be meeting with our Town Council's town hours tomorrow. I will be in that meeting just to hear, you know, firsthand what the discussion is. I mean, the Town Council's opinion was the Town Council's opinion that they asked for, and I guess I'll hear what that is, but that's going to be a discussion at the Finance Committee meeting on Thursday.
If you're looking for it, I forwarded it to the whole board on April 12th.
So I will report back on Tuesday. Any questions about financial forecast? Annual town meeting warrant articles?
Do we have any more information about the article on the state flag?
We did get an email, and I don't know if it was from the proponent who had the citizen who sent around the petition, but somebody interested in that article saying, you know, I think they asked how they could present information, and the town manager responded that you can come here, and they were... They indicated that they didn't feel comfortable coming in person because of the pandemic, and they were told that, well, you can join by Zoom, but we have not heard back from them since, and they also were told that at town meeting, you have to be there in person. There is no Zoom part of voting or participating in annual town meeting, but I have not heard any word from them since. That was last week.
Right, and I, yeah, I just let them know that we have public comment at the beginning and the end of our meetings, as does Finance at their meetings, and how to get the link through our agenda, so.
Has there been any... Has there been any from, I don't know who submitted the article, the citizen petition for it, but I'm assuming that you just mentioned that they're aware that they need to present this at town meeting. Do we expect that? Has there been follow-up from them, or is it just...
No follow-up, but we'll be doing that before town meeting to make sure that someone, if it's not a resident, then they wouldn't have to be recognized by the moderator.
Yeah, I guess I wasn't asking about us as much as them, as far as if they reached out to try to present this to the town or any other kind of way other than just a warrant on...
Right, no.
No, okay. Thank you.
And just to be clear, it's not a requirement that they present it, but obviously, since this is going to catch people's attention saying, I don't understand this, and they're going to want an explanation beside what's in the article. And what's in the article, if you go to the webpage of this, of the Governor's Council investigating this, basically exactly what's in that citizen petition. So it's like I didn't learn anything more from there either, so, okay.
Thank you.
No problem. Consent calendar. Okay, so we have a discussion on the select board goal. So we have two, three goals. One of them is 30 School Street, which is, you know, in progress, and we have an article on town meeting for the teardown and for funds to finalize the engineering for the... For that project. The second one is the senior tax abatement that Mr. Franco and I reported back that we are working on and we're waiting. In fact, we did get some information back from the assessor, principal assessor, so we'll be scheduling a meeting with that, so that will be in progress. So the only other goal we had was how to encourage volunteerism for involvement in town, whether it's elected, appointed bodies, or whether it's, you know, trying to, any kind of volunteerism, trying to set up, you know, on Earth Day, trash pickup along side road, whatever, how do we encourage that, and how do we potentially do a better job? This was a goal that was put on when we, at the beginning of the, you know, fiscal year, so we had not really discussed it, and so we figured, because this was a lighter meeting that we, you know, as far as agenda, that we would talk about. So the discussion is open.
It's like Lou must have said something.
Well, no, I'm trying... Yeah, well, it's unrelated, I'm trying to figure...
I can't get it to open.
I'm trying to figure out if the Wi-Fi cracked out.
No.
It did it?
Did it?
Yep.
Because I can't get it to open either.
Yeah.
So if...
I don't know that way, I just... Nothing, I was fumbling trying to get the thing, the document open, so I don't have... Go ahead if you have something of substance.
Yeah, so on, I'll go to the last thing that you mentioned about the, kind of the townwide stuff. This is a hard, this is a hard goal, and I know that we've had a lot of discussions about like, you know, I can think of the times when many residents from Lake Shirley showed up here, and it's like, you know, I have this feeling that when residents think that something is going wrong, that they're going to show up and tell us, and I don't... And I think that we've been very open to that happening, and, you know, certainly I don't think, I don't think that we've ever put up a barrier to residents of them not coming forward and presenting their concerns. We get the emails, you know, throughout the month, not everyone's happy with what we do. We certainly get those, and some people are. So I get this feeling that on the side of, do people trust that they can come here and discuss their concerns with us and get to a better result? I think the answer to that... I think the answer to that question is yes, for the most part. But how do you get people to, you know, leave their habits and want to step up? That's hard because normally it's, it seems as if like most of us who are engaged are, something bad happens that then triggers us to say, wait a minute. I mean, that's usually, I think, the case for a lot of us of what gets us engaged. So, so part of this, I feel like, you know, some of this is just going to be tough because there's town politics or state politics, there's federal politics. People have churches, they have their jobs, they have, and so, you know, we're competing for a lot of attention and then everyone's on their phone, which has eaten up hours of everyone's day, you know? The other side of this is, you know, I did, every year I do the cleanup on Earth Day or around Earth Day down Mass Ave. And I don't, and I don't do, you know, the whole hill. I just do my side of the hill. And I mean, this year, last year I did five, I think we got five or six, like residential trash bags. Five or six last year. So this year I'm like, I'm gonna get two construction bags and I'm gonna be done. I filled up two full construction bags of trash from about a hundred yard stretch of Mass Ave, just one side of the road, you know, like. But I, I know that as I was doing it, many people were slowing down. They were, they were clearly watching. And then throughout the day, I noticed over the weekend that a lot of other people were doing it too. And I'm not saying it had anything to do with me, but I think that as people see other people doing it, that that is a motivator. You know, and so some stuff like that, I think that, there was even a comment I read on social media of someone that said, I've been trying to get Earth Day townwide cleanup going for years and don't know what to do to get it going, or something, something to that effect. And I don't usually respond on social media and I didn't respond on social media. But of course, all I can think of is like, well, like, how do we facilitate this, you know? Anyway, so my opinion is maybe there's, there certainly seems to be concrete things we can do for Earth Day. But really, I mean, I think that with all the requirements that are on us, that I don't have capacity. I really want this to happen, but I'm really looking for a resident to step up and really take point. So.
So, my comment on this is, is I think one of the ways that we could promote volunteerism is to maybe consider an event, an event or two that could draw people where we could get in front of residents to, you know, have a face-to-face of, of, you know, asking, hey, do you want to come volunteer for the town? Here's the things you can do. So from my own personal experience, the way I got involved in volunteering in the town is, it was the last bonfire that we had at the, at the old high school because there was booths everywhere. You'd walk around. It was like a fair or something like that. And the town had a booth for, with talent bank forms and said, hey, fill out a talent bank form. I got a call the next week and said, hey, do you want to be on, join the conservation commission? Okay. So, but things like that, if we can come up with ways to, to draw people out and, you know, family-friendly events that draw people out. If, if the kids go there, the adults are gonna be there, then you can get in front of them and, and, and we can make our pitch that, you know, it's worth it to volunteer for the town. What those events are, I don't know. We have some in town already, but, you know, this is where we engage people like the cultural council and things like that to try and come up with these events that can draw people in. And then maybe that helps promote volunteerism in the town. That's just, you know, one thought.
Yeah, we have done those, those booths for several years.
Yeah.
When they had, when we had the fair, well, not only the bonfire then, we had the fair at the Stillman Farm. There were booths there every year that, you know, different people manned, you know. I did some time there and I know the previous members of other bodies, you know, select board, sewer commission, you know, took rounds and tried to get people in.
Can we, can we hijack a table at the farmer's market?
Sure.
Gives us, you know, something like that?
We don't have to hijack it. We can actually bring our own.
Things like that.
You're not selling this corn. Yeah, I mean, that would be helpful.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a great idea. Also, you know, can, I mean, can an announcement be made? Of course, those people are already captive. They're already involved, but, you know, town meeting, maybe pieces in the ledger once in a while, social media, put, put the word out on the various pages.
I know Chris Menard has, has been pretty good at doing that in the past.
Yes.
And I think that since the town manager put it on, has been putting it on, I think we've, we've really closed the loop. I think we have, you know, very few openings now for those, for those things. You know, I, I think it was a, I think it was a Massachusetts native, Tip O'Neill, who said that, you know, all politics is local. Well, even that's not even true anymore. It's like all, all participation is like micro-local. Like, like Mr. Jeffrey said, when, when there's an issue at one of the lakes, there's no problem with people coming here from that neighborhood or that group or if it's something with the library, you know, then the people who really use the library come in or, you know. But to get people in general, it's, you know, I'm sure there's a whole list of things. You listed a lot of them. You know, most of it is time probably, you know? I want to spend time with my family, but I'm working and I have to, my kids are involved, especially if they have children, their kids are involved in different activities. And, you know, it's just not, I work out of town, so I'm commuting. I don't know. I, my, the biggest frustration has been in my public service has been exactly this, is that why can't we get more people? Why is there an election that's gonna go on on May 21st and there's not one contested seat? You know, I'm, 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 I think contested seats are good, they're healthy and, but, you know, we have them less and less and, you know, we can't even fill all the, all the seats that are gonna be open when we're running, you know? There was a planning board seat still that nobody's running for that I, at least to the last of my knowledge, I don't think anybody took out papers for that. So, I don't know. I mean, we, we decided to put this on here and there's no magic bullet, that's for sure.
Right.
Yeah, it's probably not, yeah, exactly. There is no magic bullet. It's probably, you know, just various avenues. You know, and, and consistency in bombardment, carpet bombing with the information essentially. So.
Imagery has to be disturbing. You know, one of the things we ask is that people, if you serve, that talk to your friends and everything. The problem is that the same people serve on many things, so you have a circle, that circle of people who are involved in the town all know each other. So you run out of people to ask.
Yeah.
Because the people you would ask are all kind of involved already. Or they've been involved for 10 years and they're like, yo. It's hard to approach somebody who said, you know, I did 10 years somewhere. I did my time. I need some time for somebody else to step up. So. Well, if you are listening out there and you have ideas about how to get people more involved and how to get them to volunteer for things, I mean, it's all for a good cause. It's for our community. It doesn't go outside of that. Please, you know, send in your suggestions and send them into the, the town's email. Each of the board members, the town manager, you know, drop us a line in person or something. My, my phone number is listed and several other members I think might be listed. But I'm always willing to listen to, you know, people who can get other people involved because I think the more people that are involved, the more representative the whole community is. And I think we make better decisions that way.
One thing as well that, you know, my assistant is a, is on the zoning board of appeals in his community. And he told me that he makes $250 a meeting, per meeting. And I'm like, what? And, and I'm like, does every elected official get paid? And he said, yes. Now, I'm not a big fan of elected officials getting paid in towns. I think that it's what keeps our system pure, is that the people who are here want to be here, that there's no other motivation other than the goodness of people's hearts, you know? But if we continue to struggle in certain boards, I think that it may be a worthwhile venture to look into, do we want to assign compensation to some of the elected roles? Not that, again, not that I'm a big fan of that, but typically you bring money into an equation and people tend to find a reason to get involved. Because it's, it may not be advantageous to them to step up, but if it's $300 going to your kid's car payment, you know, in the course of a month, then that may be enough to motivate someone to participate. So no one's gonna get rich, but if it can, you know, have some kind of impact on, you know, a couple of bucks, that, if we can, if this continues to get worse, I guess is what I'm saying, is that may be something viable to worth, to look into. I would remain opposed to this board being paid, but I think some of them maybe should be.
$250 a meeting. What town is he in?
He's in, uh.
And how's the housing?
He's in, uh, what town is he in? Is it Westboro? So he's in a city.
I mean, if not compensation in that form, I mean, maybe just a really good buffet once in a while. Enough to motivate me.
Man, I'm already motivated as you can clearly tell.
Well, there is the Senior Center's 55th anniversary coming up that you can go to on June 13th.
Okay, I'll make a note.
Now, annually we have had a volunteer.
Be happy to support that.
You know, recognition at the Senior Center annually.
There was only one year that I remember that the board.
Really? Only one year? Well, one year.
That I've been here.
Well, we should, well, we didn't do it, certainly we haven't done it the last two years because of the pandemic. We should resurrect that again because that's a very good thing to recognize people who are doing it. So if we can work with Sue and see if, you know, after the town meeting and after the election, we can have that appreciation. Because it's good at the end of the year before people get reappointed. So.
Was that, excuse me, Madam Town Manager, was, was, was that May 13th or June 13th?
June, it's Flag Day. So that is.
June 14th.
June 14th.
June 14th.
That's a Tuesday.
Flag Day, Flag Day, what day of the calendar year that is just flows off everybody's stomach. Flag Day.
Isn't that a Tuesday this year?
It is.
It's, it's also my birthday. It's also Donald Trump's birthday.
So that's at noon.
So every, every year you're celebrating, you're celebrating Trump.
Oh, when he was elected, my father loved to tell me that. He just, oh, guess whose else's birthday it is.
Exercising full restraint. Okay. Next we have, I love, I just love saying this because it means absolutely nothing to me, draft tailings policy. If they could pick out three words out of a hat that I could put together, draft tailings policy.
Which is not at all, the description does not meet what it is.
No. So, can you explain this to us in the financials? I know what it is.
Yes. So basically uncashed checks that.
Uncashed checks of hours that we write, right? So uncashed checks that we send to people?
No.
Or the uncashed checks that.
Well, there's both for.
Why would we have uncashed checks? That people give to us?
Because, oh, that were issued. I'm sorry. This came up in our, in our audit. So there are checks that were either reissued, lost, or are being held for dispersments and expenditures of outstanding checks. So.
So, so I understand better. So the intent is that, you know, any check that's written that's more than 90 days old, well then, that's not cashed, it would be looked into why it hasn't been cashed. And then within 180 days, then it will be canceled.
Correct.
Okay.
But, so those are checks that we are issuing, that's what I'm saying. That means we write a check to somebody, they don't cash it. I mean, there's no checks that we're holding for 90 days that are, we're not cashing.
Correct.
Okay, okay, that's what I meant. All right. So this, I was gonna say, why do we have to investigate something that we're holding? Either cash it or don't cash. But it's, okay, so we can't balance the books. Right. Okay. This, this all makes sense. Did anybody read it through?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm assuming this was written in conjunction, the tax collector has looked at this as well and the finance director?
Both have. Both are in agreeance. Yep. The sample policy came from our auditor from another community. It's been recommended by our auditor the last two audits.
Well, this makes sense.
Take care of management letter comment.
Those unexpended funds, do they end up rolling over into free cash or can they be expended for another purpose within that category?
No, they'd be closed out at the end of the year.
Okay. Okay.
This seems to be prudent policy?
Yep.
And it goes along with, you're required to accept Mass General Law 200.
200A.
200A.
The 200A, section 9A.
Yes, which we did October 30th, 2010. So we're in compliance there as well.
Will that be the board accepted or the town?
The town or the town meeting.
Yeah, the town had it accepted, which we did 12 years ago. Well, not 12 years ago, 11 and a half years ago.
Auditors would like to see a written policy. We already do this in practice. The treasurer collector's actually been going through a tailings procedure for the last two years. So it's something we already do, is just putting it in writing and formalizing it.
So because this is a draft, we'll just, we'll leave it here and then just bring it back for a vote. You want to do it next week or do you want to wait two weeks after town meeting? Doesn't matter.
Do you have questions on?
It's pretty straightforward, I thought.
Yeah, straightforward. Well, I'm only want to hold it off because it says draft, so usually there's like a reading and then we can just bring it up one last time. It just seems appropriate that, that we don't bring something up, discuss it and vote on it at the same meeting.
Okay.
That's all. So let's put it on our next meeting and we can just approve it then. I mean, why? Do we have a stack of checks that we're looking?
I just thought it was something simple that everyone's in agreeance for and our auditors are recommending that we do, so we'll just take care of it.
Yeah, well, we will, next week.
Okay.
Again, only because it says draft, so I like to have at least a couple of readings. I'm not gonna do the full school committee three readings, but we can do at least two, so. Amend a one-day liquor license policy to include insurance requirement. So is the network back here? Looks like it. Policies. Liquor license. All right, there we go. So where did we look to, is it in here to be amended or we, this is just?
No, just the existing. One is in there.
So.
So we want to change, add a criteria for approval or acceptance of conditions?
Insurance.
So that would be, so two, criteria for approval or conditions to be contained in the license? So probably conditions, I'm assuming.
No, I think it would be the criteria for approval. They would need insurance in order to.
May I, may I ask what prompted this, how this came about?
I think it's a requirement for any liquor. So it's just, it was on the action item list as well that we look at adding insurance for one day as well. It would mirror liquor license obligations.
I guess I'm asking, does the state require this or do they recommend it?
No, the, the, basically the body approving licenses puts these regulations together. We send any approvals to the ABCC.
And one-day liquor licenses are only when liquor is for sale, correct? I'm just trying to think about, we haven't had a one-day liquor license because no one has done anything for two years. So we haven't, I can't recall. I'm just want to see if, if the entities that have come before us, well, Smokehouse would be, wouldn't apply to this because it would be, they already have insurance as a restaurant. I'm wondering if there are entities that come to us for one-time liquor, one-day liquor licenses that wouldn't have access to insurance. So it would be prohibitive for them to do this. And I don't know that there are any, but it would be interesting to know if we, who has asked for one-day liquor licenses.
Even a nonprofit would, you would think would need the insurance requirement for, to have an event that has liquor being sold at it.
Yeah, I mean, in principle, I'm not against it. I just want to make sure that.
I guess if we're asking for insurance, I would like to see in the policy what the minimum insurance limits would be and what we would expect of something that, I mean, might be, you know, for parties of, you know, a certain size, you'd have to meet these insurance limits if it was a huge event, 500 people or so, you know, maybe. You know, maybe, are there tiers to it, things like that? I, I think we need a little more definition than just say, get an insurance policy. I, I, I think we'd want to provide some guidance to, to folks who, who want to comply with the policy of, of what they should do and, and, you know, give them some direction and, resources that they can reach out to for, for the sorts of, these sorts of things.
Do we have any sample language, or do you have any sample language?
No, I do not today.
So I've, I've been in the situation where I've managed some property that would occasionally get one-day liquor licenses, and.
Who, and who was applying?
This is in Cambridge.
Who was applying for it?
This would be really any organization that wanted to have a.
But an organization.
Yeah, and organ, and nonprofit organizations. And, and so there were a couple of one-day liquor licenses that were required, and as I, as I recall that process, I don't, even in Cambridge, I don't think the, that there was an insurance requirement, and. But I'll look into that.
Like I said, I don't, I personally don't have any problem thinking that there, that would be a decent idea to have one. I'm not married to it. I mean, it would be interesting to see what other people are doing and.
Yeah, my only concern is if it's prohibitive, if, if, you know, an insurance company says, wait a minute, you want me to insure you for one day? None of your people do this for a living, and then it becomes some absorbing cost, then to me, it kind of defeats the purpose of having it.
Is it possible for Elaine to look back like the last five years and see what one-day liquor licenses we've given? Because I can't believe there'd be that many anyway.
Yes, yep.
Because I'd just like to know who asked for them. And, and what would, and what would be the cost, well, what would be, as long as the town may be part of the policy, and I'm just, I'm just spitballing here, so just having an open discussion. You know, maybe we have a part of the policy that, that the applicant is fully liable, and the town holds no liability for the distribution, if you follow these things, if you, people, you have certified people and ever, everything, you know. That would cover the town too. I just don't want the town to be held liable.
Yeah, I mean, you can, I just went online last night, uh, right now in Google, and a bunch of different towns have insurance requirements.
Okay, yeah, okay.
So, all right, so is this something that we will discuss next week to figure out kind of what those limits should be?
Yeah, we should come up with sample, you know, I would ask the board to look, look at it and think about it, and let's come back with something that's, you know, sample word, verbiage to put in there.
I know, um, okay. We have a, since we're heading into town meeting, I'm okay if we do this ourselves, like as members instead of.
That's why I just, I just ask the members, I don't want to put anything on the town manager because that's between now and next Saturday is going to be crazy. Okay, so we come back to that. Okay, review the sign policy, signs at polling places during elections. Okay. Don't we, aren't there state laws that govern this?
A hundred and fifty feet from the polling location is the state law.
Okay.
But our policy doesn't allow for this at all right now.
Oh, this is the, these are, ah, these are people posting on, you're talking about the people who, who would put it on the front of the, the entranceway?
Right.
Okay, yes, now I remember that coming up. So when people historically have put, vote for somebody, you know, in blanketed mass Ave, so people coming into the polling place, see them, that does not fit the signage on town property policy. How would we word this? Wow.
So, so I'm understanding, we're looking.
So either. Just to clarify what, what's in question. So at any election, town election, or any, any voting of any kind in the town, it has been accepted practice that we allow people to, you know, put their lawn signs along Mass Ave as they come into TC Passios. Less so because, from the Oak Ave side, because that entrance is relatively new, and nobody really stands over there, and more people come in from Mass Ave than from the backside, although people come in from the backside. With this current policy of town, the signage on town property, that really is not allowed because it's not in here. So either we're going to disallow the whole thing, which seems ridiculous. I don't know if ridiculous is the word I've used, but it seems counterintuitive or counterproductive. But we should put in another number in here that, that basically details what is allowed and how far and where.
Yep. Well, okay, I'll start writing it, draft, because I think it's straightforward.
Uh, we want to, well, I think we should probably get this done before the town election.
Yep.
Again, it's not a contested one, so I don't think there's going to be tons of lawn signs anyway, but it would be nice to have it. So. If we can think about what that verbiage would be, something like within, you know, within X amount of place off the street, you know, off the curb, and for this amount of distance from either entrance to the polling place, like those are the places you, we'd allow it. That would be an example. I mean, is this some of the ideas that you kind of envisioned, or did you have any particular?
No, I just think certain paragraphs are going to need to be modified because it's saying where signs are allowed.
Yeah, I think there's going to be a number that's going to have to do specifically with.
Elections.
With election signs, yeah. Election signs, actually, election signs on election day.
Yeah.
So it's not even, you know, none of them are allowed on town property, no election signs are allowed on town property, except for election day.
Yeah.
And that's only at the polling place and only in these strips, we can say.
Yeah, I can work on that wording because that was where my mind was going, was election days and specifically time windows around that. And we already know the locations where we tend to do it at, and so I think I can, I can work with some verbiage that would allow what we've been doing to continue, but make sure that, you know, all those stuff is, all those signs are cleaned up.
Yep.
For the next morning.
I mean, when I read this policy, it doesn't read to me like this is addressing election signs at all.
No, no, exactly.
This is just, just events.
Right, but it does, but because we have this policy of signage on town poli, on town property.
Right.
The existent putting those signs on town property is not allowed, so therefore everything else is disallowed. That means you need, you need permission, according to this policy, you need permission to put any signs on town property.
Yeah.
So we need to make, we need to carve out an exception for election signs of a certain size.
Yep.
You know.
And as, as I, as I just looked up, because I was thinking about particularly the parcel of, is it town? Technically, I mean, I know all of it's town, but is it us, or is that the school? Where a lot of that happens at? Can we create a policy that would govern that area? Or would that fall underneath the town's right-of-way? Because we own that sidewalk, and.
Yeah, I would say it's town's right-of-way.
All right, so we gotta.
That's what I'm saying, we'd have to say it's a certain distance off the curb.
So, so to me, I think crafting a policy for the election signs is, is providing a solution to a problem we don't have, and I think it's going to invite some unintended consequences. For example, if you have a number of contested elections, you know, and what if, are you going to limit each candidate to only a certain number of signs, three or four signs, or six signs, or whatever that number is? And, or, I mean, some people may want to spend a lot of money on, have their election campaign, spend a lot of money on signs. So they want to put, you know, 40 signs on there, are we going to allow that? I mean, it, it gets, you know, and then if we're stifling that, or, you know, is. I, I, I think a policy may create a lot of difficulty for us. When I don't know that we've had much trouble, other than saying election day signs may be placed on town property on election day and must comply with all state laws, or something simple.
Yeah.
Make it very broad as opposed to something, you know.
Well, we just don't want them going too far. I mean, you're, you, the fact that, I mean, we could even say that their, the placements are on a first serve, you know, first come, first served basis, so it's like, you know, if somebody wants to buy 600 signs and blanket the whole thing with 600 signs, go to it. That's fine. It's one day, and I, the town doesn't take a responsibility to do it, but that's not going to, in, in, while it's possible, it's not going to happen because it never happened that anybody knows of in the last, you know, 30 years, 40 years. So, you know. I, I don't see, I understand your point in the potential of it happening, but by not enforcing our own thing and saying, we could just say, hey, listen, no signs here at all, would be kind of counter getting people involved and enthused at election day, so.
And, and, yeah, and I, I, you know, there's, there's currently one, I mean, I know that we, we have to be really, we don't have the ability to regulate too much content because of, we're a government and we have free speech. So it does get tricky. I see where you're coming from though, which is basically saying like, maybe doing nothing is the best approach.
That's a broad, really broad policy, but maybe we may need to phrase this and have a really broad kind of recommendation,
but also do it, you know, send it to the school committee and ask them to confirm as well. That way there's no daylight between what we're saying and what they're agreeing to, so that way we don't have any issues come election day. Because all of it happens in, for the most part, school property.
Yeah, we just got to say when you can put them up. I mean, again, what, what we have to do is carve out at, at least a part that says it's allowed, and we can limit it to whatever sparse requirements we need, like we could just say, oh, you can't put them up before 12:00 midnight of, of, of election day, and they have to be out no more than two hours after the polls close.
Yep.
That's it, those, like, that's when they have to be gone. I mean, and then we could just say, and this is the distance, this is the avenue that you could put them in. You know, for 500 feet in either direction, that's town property. You know, if anybody who has 500 feet away on, you know, private property, they can put up the signs whenever they want.
There have, there has been some stink raised in the past about why it's permitted, and I, I have heard that, about why are all these signs allowed on town property? So I, I think I do recall a couple of years back, not that it was a big deal, but that it was a minor deal that someone raised. Because, you know, elections get.
Well, they raised it because we adopted this policy that we're looking at, because they're like, I thought these weren't allowed.
I mean, an alternative could be, you don't allow any signs to be planted on town property, but you can have an unlimited number of volunteers holding signs, you know, on.
Yeah, well, I think that's accepted, we don't even, yeah.
I mean.
The question is, do we, I mean, it's an open discussion, so I don't know. I, I personally don't mind the little bit of fanfare that day, the advertising, who's running for what, whether it's local, or whether it's a state office, or whether it's national office.
I, I guess my big concern is, is if we craft a policy that's too narrow, and someone says, you know, it's a first come, first served basis, but the person who, the candidate who comes in, uh, she or he may, you know, know someone and get, you know, 50 slots for signs before, because they were the first come. And they said, I want all the slime, sign slots. And is that a tacit, is that a tacit endorsement by the town? Because, you know, it, it could look like there's a conflict, that they know someone in town, they get the permit first and, and that sort of thing, and, you know. That, that's what I, that's what I worry about.
Well, this, first of all, as far as the tacit approval or support of a, of a candidate, I don't see how that would amount to that if there's a policy that says they can do that. You know, ever since I've been involved in town, that's what people would do at four and the five in the morning. If you, depending on how contested it was, people would go and they'd put all their signs, and all their signs this way, and, you know, Dave knows. And that's what you did, and if you could block people out, that's, that's part of the quote gamesmanship, whatever.
Well, and, and that's part of the reason why I think, you know, sometimes no policy is better than a policy.
Well, we just have to allow them, like I said. We just have to say, on election day, you can put them there, and where you can put them. And we're not going to make any other rules, just so somebody can say, well, your own policy doesn't even say you're allowed them. We're going to say, no, you can't allow them, on this day, only on this day, and only in these areas.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I, I agree.
Okay.
I can work on something next, meaning.
Michael is going to work. Mr. Passios. We're encour, we're encouraging volunteerism today.
Dave Passios, 56 Whiting Street again, and yes, the political process on, uh, election day is rather interesting. You run around town, gather up all your signs from all over town, you put them all in front of the school.
It has a robust history in.
It sure does. I just did a quick search in my computer, just to give you what the town in Yarmouth states, and it's very simple. Please be aware that no signs are allowed on public property with the single exception of polling locations with 100 feet setbacks on election day. Then it goes on to mention a couple of things in their zoning bylaws for signs in general in town.
Yep, thank you. Yeah, that's what I think is a good thing to have more, just, just so somebody can say, your own policy doesn't allow it. Like, it does allow it, and it's pretty open, so.
Yep, yep. All right.
Okay, approval of minutes from March 15th of this year. Anybody have any questions about those minutes or any amendments? Then I would entertain a motion regarding the minutes of March 15th.
I move to approve the minutes of March 15th, 2022, as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, none. So we have approved the minutes of the Ides of March, all right. Ratification of the annual town election warrant. I think we've already done that, right?
You haven't ratified it.
Oh, we haven't ratified it? Ah, okay.
We've all signed it, so.
I would entertain a motion of the, we ratify the annual town election warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, opposed?
Aye.
None. Slow on the take there, Mr. Franco. All right, so warrants. Accounts payable in the amount of $615,652 and 25 cents.
I hate to do this, but can I bring up a point of order on that last vote?
Yes.
Uh, I, I, I believe you the way you, what we, the, you said we're ratifying the annual town election warrant. What we're really ratifying is the signing that we did after the fact, so, but we didn't say that when we took the vote.
Take that back. I would entertain a motion on the ratification of the annual town election warrant signing by the select board.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
That's why, that's why I had the hesitation before.
Okay. Deduction warrant in the amount of $202,455 and 76 cents. Last but not least, payroll in the amount of $845,815 and 21 cents. Action items, the only action item, I don't, I don't, doesn't really know, I don't know if it really belongs under action items, but everybody should be making their appointment to meet with the town manager regarding the evaluations, and then get them to me, I don't have the deadline in front of me, but get them to me so that I don't have to do this on the last day that we need to do it. We want to, we want to have two meetings, remember, the draft should be presented on the second to last meeting before the election, and then it should be, any amendments or any modifications or amendments should be available for the next week where we ratify it and accept it. Because then there'll be a town election, and then there's, could be new membership, and. So we want to get that done, and I just want to have enough time for me to write this. If people can present it and provide it to me digitally, as not a scan of, so not that digitally. No, no, and just the thing I do. I think I did a last year's scan then. Yeah, so just because it makes it easier when I do composites, if somebody has phrased something that I just want to cut and paste instead of me typing it in. I know it enhances my typing skills, but I'd rather not.
Yep.
So, is anybody, Lou, are you clear on this?
Um.
Like what you have to do?
Not, not entirely, no.
Well, you can call me and I will go over the process.
Yes, I would like that.
Call any of us, but feel free to call me and, uh, I'll tell you how to fill it out.
Thank you, that was.
Done it before, you've definitely done it before.
I was going to raise it, you beat me to it. Thank you, yeah, I do need some guidance.
Yep, no problem. And you have distributed yours already?
Yes, last week.
Yeah, I, I thought so, I just verified.
It's Thursday.
While on vacation, I want the record show. Town manager submitted. Okay. Any other action items? Any committee reports, Mr. Dwyer?
Uh, yes, I attended a meeting of the stormwater task force last Thursday. The primary focus of the meeting was, uh, a meeting with Nick Cristofori, uh, of C E I. They're our stormwater consultant and we went over, um, the M S four, uh, permit, um, review for the last year.
Okay. What does the budgeting look like for that, by the way? I mean, because it, all along the years, it's like, oh, this is going to hit, it's going to be real expensive and I don't know where we are.
So, we don't have a, a very clear understanding of where the, the town's efforts in terms of compliance with the M S four permit is, is expended. So, we don't track, so for example, D P W staff would go and, and clean a, a storm drain or something like that. We don't track that time separately to say, hey, this is a stormwater task and it should go under that. That's one of the things that we're going to start to work with, with the D P W director before he resigned. So, we never really got to that step. So, that's something that over the next year, we're really going to want to try and make a push. Because until we understand how our stormwater dollars are spent, it hard, it's hard for us to ask the town in the future to say, hey, you know, we, we need some additional dollars for stormwater because, you know, without knowing that information. So, that's something that we really have to work towards and eventually there wants to be like a, a stormwater enterprise fund. But we need this information, uh, before we can really, you know, get to that point.
Just, uh, to clarify about the catch basin cleaning thing, that is documented. I'll document what we're, are part of the M S four requirements though, so, and, and best management practices that we're required to do as far as what we submit for the permit. Our budget in the, in line item budget is a hundred thousand four, but it's primarily for consulting, all these tasks that are associated with the M S four requirements each year.
Well, and, and just to give a little characterization, so C E I, it helps us, uh, administer the permit or, or meet, meet the permit requirements for M S four. And, and their characterization of, of how we do compared to other towns, they say Lunenburg does a, a very good job dealing with all these requirements of, of cleaning catch basins and all the different things, locating all our outfalls and things like that. They, we, we do a, a very good job of that, but, you know, there's always things that we can do better and, and we, we can dive a little deeper because we only think these requirements are going to get more strict in the future, so.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Franco, any, can you report?
None, none for anything that was attended, but I'm just, but I'll make a note, announcement that there'll be a school committee meeting tomorrow night at six, which I will attend.
No. And again, the only comment I had is that the finance committee meeting, which is the last meeting, is it your last meeting before town meeting? Yep, you're not having one next Thursday? No, right, okay. So, this is the last meeting and capital planning will, the capital planning question that I brought up earlier will be discussed and they'll be reviewing some other, um, articles that they have not taken votes on. There are a handful, not many. So, that is Thursday at seven, is it here or is, okay, it is here and, and Zoom, so it's hybrid, okay.
Economic Development Committee, their survey is up on the website now. So, if anyone wants to fill that out, is now live on the, the website.
Excellent.
Should have mentioned that, thank, thank you.
Uh, upcoming meeting, so again, we have a meeting May third on next Tuesday. Then we have the annual town meeting, May seventh, and we're back in regular session, May tenth. And take the meetings from there. Any final public comment from the public?
Dave Passios, fifty-six Whiting Street again. Uh, this is an unsolicited public announcement, uh, partially because I am on the Parks Commission. Nothing rings in spring in this town, uh, better than opening day for Little League. They actually sent us an email to the Parks Commission earlier today, uh, asking for a couple of things that need to be adjusted for their parade, uh, arriving at the park and so on and so forth. I don't have the particulars on the route, but it always used to be down Main Street, Highland Street to Chestnut Street. I'll just read this very quickly, it's one, one or two sentences, I'm writing to inform, form you that our annual parade and opening ceremonies for the Lunenburg Little League will be held this Saturday, uh, April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. And then they ask for a couple of things that need to be adjusted, gates opening, so on and so forth. I just bring it up as an opportunity for the public to, um, ask, or ask the public to take a, a good, hard look at Marshall Park. It's our gem of a park as far as parks is concerned, it's twenty-eight acres. From the open field areas, that's only a portion of the park. And, uh, over the next few years, we will be developing, uh, more uses there, encompassing more of the park and renovating a couple of the fields. So, a lot of great things are going to be happening there and I encourage everybody to come out. Looks like the weather's going to be a typical opening day type, uh, weather cool in the morning and sunshine for the rest of the day. One other quick note, uh, just so that this board is aware, the skate park group relocated their sign this Sunday from the Passios property to the entrance off of Route two A for Marshall Park. So, they have officially moved it over there, they took care of, uh, checked with state on setbacks and everything, so the sign is there.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
So, what, what time is the parade, by the way?
They didn't give me a time, I believe it used to be noon, but I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment from the public? Any public comment from the board?
No.
None.
No, having completed our agenda, I would entertain a mo- motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Good night, everyone, take care of yourselves, take care of each other, see you next Tuesday. Bye-bye.
Recording stopped.
What, that was recorded?
That was fast, off air.